Madam Mayor, don't you think we should get started? We're now four minutes late. If we tolerate these people coming minutes late, then it will get worse and worse.
Thank you, Commissioner, we're getting started now. I've just turned my mic on and waiting for it to go live, thank you. Yes, we're going to make a start now. Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to this virtual meeting of the Borough Council. Most members have become familiar with our virtual meeting format, but as a brief reminder and for the benefit of any public who may be watching this live stream, I would just like to highlight a few points. Please keep your microphone muted when not speaking to avoid any background noise and ensure that any other mobile devices are on silent or switched off. Please use the meeting chat to indicate your wish to speak and I'll invite you in at the appropriate time. Should my connection as Chair be lost during the meeting, the Deputy Mayor will take over and a shorter adjournment may be called until the connection is resumed. It is with great sadness that I have to announce the death of Darren Taylor. Darren was an engineer in the Growth Enterprise and Environment Directorate. He started his employment with the council on the 4th of September 1989. He was 47 years old. Our thoughts are with his family and friends. Would members please join me in a minute's silence as a mark of respect? Thank you, everyone. Before we move on to deal quickly with the technical issue before the business for the meeting is started, you will be aware that under the terms of the constitution, there is normally a requirement for members to stand when speaking and that voting is usually, by the way, of a show of hands. Obviously, these rules are impractical in a remote meeting, so can I propose that Council Procedure Rules 21.1 and 17.3 are disapplied for this meeting so that standing is not required and voting will take place by way of a roll call if necessary? Could somebody second the proposal, please?
I'll second that proposal, councillor Gallagher.
Thank you councillor Gallagher. So I assume we can approve this. Does anybody disagree? Thank you, that's moved. So moving on to the agenda, item one, apologies for absence. Have we received any apologies for absence?
Could I speak, Madam Mayor? Mr Jones, councillor Jones?
Councillor Jones?
Yeah, I've got councillor Sean Moody, he is en route, but he's going to be about 25 minutes to 30 minutes late, if that's okay. And he apologises for that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, apologies from councillor Dowson, please.
Is that councillor King speaking? Thank you, councillor Dowson. I think we have apologies for councillor Griffiths. Are there any further apologies?
Councillor Fisher.
Councillor Fisher, thank you. And can we just clarify on councillor Westbury, please? We appear to have received apologies for councillor Westbury.
Yeah, I did send him in, but I am here.
Oh, thank you, welcome. Okay, any further apologies? Thank you. Item two, to receive declarations of interest. So obviously, there's no form to be circulated today, but Democratic Services holds a register of all interests. If you have an interest that is pertinent to a particular item of business on the agenda, I would ask that you declare it at the start of that relevant item. Item three, to confirm the accuracy of the minutes of the meeting held on the 15th of October. Is somebody available to move those minutes, please?
I'll move those minutes, Madam Mayor.
I'll second those, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, so that's moved by councillor Glynn Nightingale and seconded by councillor Mary Lanigan. Right, are we all agreed to move those minutes? Okay, thank you. Councillor Barnes, do you wish to speak on the minutes?
Yeah, it's just a small item, but there is actually an error in the minutes. On page eight, item eight, it states the report of the Cabinet Member for Adults. It should be the Cabinet Member for Children and Families. It was my report in the last council meeting.
Okay, thank you councillor Barnes, can we amend that? Thank you, thank you. Anything else arising from those minutes, please? Okay, thank you. Item four, to receive any announcements firstly from the mayor. Well, first of all, I would just like to ask everyone to try and support the Salvation Army Christmas Toy Appeal, if at all possible, because of course this year more than ever, your support is needed. There are a number of ways to support the appeal. There are online donations via JustGiving. You can buy an item from their Amazon gift list or you can donate actual unwrapped gifts at one of the drop-off points. Please email me if you'd like any further details on those. Unfortunately, this year it is not possible to hold the mince pie and mulled wine, followed by the Christmas light switch on, as is customary following this meeting. And I hope you will join in the doorstep switch on on the 3rd of December. In the meantime, I would like to invite members to join me in raising a glass or perhaps a cup of cocoa at 8pm this evening to remember the dedication and hard work of all our key workers and wish everyone in our borough a happy but safe Christmas. Thank you. Are there any announcements from the leader?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Coronavirus continues to be a major challenge before us and it's with regret that the government confirmed today that Redcar Cleveland Council will be in the highest tier restrictions when the national lockdown ends next week. That was inevitable and I think that we all felt, Madam Mayor, that that was going to happen. There is some good news in that the infection rate has started to decline quite sharply, that the different factors considered by government weren't yet at a level which would have prevented us from going into this tier, along with our neighbours in the Tees Valley. I just need to inform members that Redcar Cleveland Council had no input into us going into tier three, it was a government decision and that's where we stood this morning. The news, of course, is disappointing and no one wants our residents in Redcar Cleveland or hospitality businesses who have responded so well to this crisis to face these further restrictions. However, health must come first and we are doing all we can to bring the spread of this disease under control and make sure businesses and people receive the support they deserve. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our public health teams, our senior members of staff and everyone who has worked towards getting these numbers down. Testing will be crucial in the coming weeks and months and the first of these two purpose book testing sites opens at the Spitalerne in Numb Road in South Bank on Monday and another one at Belmont House in Gisborough, which will open early next month. Both will be in addition to the mobile sites based at Kirk-Cleveland and we expect to make further announcements about major testing initiatives across the borough very soon. Going into tier three does mean that more support will be available to affected businesses and we will be giving more information about that as soon as it's been confirmed by the government. Of course, we, along with the whole country, are closely following news of the positive developments about the vaccines, which brings such hope and there is at last a light at the end of the dark tunnel. I would like to thank everyone in the borough for helping to keep themselves and others safe and I know things remain difficult, but we can only move to fewer restrictions if we continue to work together. Despite the ongoing challenges of pandemic, we continue to build for the future in Redcar Cleveland and strive to improve the lives of the residents. PD Ports recently announced its assets to bring a second waste-to-energy plant in the area and it's attracted £430 million of private investments. This will be creating hundreds of jobs. The agreement with Wentworth Clean Power Limited will deliver a second advanced project, also based at Tees Port, with an annual capacity of 250,000 tonnes of specialist feedstocks and an electrical output which is enough to power 16,000 homes. The project will also generate usable heat and will offer the potential for direct heat supply to local and planned developments in the area together with a direct electrical supply. The announcement follows the £230 million deal to bring the waste-to-energy plant to the site, firmly positioning the port in the Tees Valley at the forefront of clean energy. Subject to planning approval, this second project will generate up to 300 full-time jobs during construction phase and up to a further 50 full-time jobs when operational, including very high skilled engineering post. The site is expected to be operational by 2025. There is more good news about major investment for our borough and its testament to the hard work of everyone involved, as well as the fact that Redcar Cleveland is a fantastic place to invest and do business. Net Zero Teeside, Madam Mayor, which would be established at the Tees Works site, has recently signed a partnership to develop offshore carbon storage under the North Sea, which will help speed up the development of this scheme. Net Zero Teeside aims to develop the UK's first decarbonised industrial cluster and will be established at the works, as I've said. The project is being delivered by a consortium with the world's largest oil companies led by BP and the project will be operational by 2030. The partnership between Net Zero Teeside and Zero Carbon Humber will help accelerate the development of offshore carbon dioxide transport and storage infrastructure. The scheme is estimated to bring £450 million in annual gross benefit to the Teeside region and could support up to 5,500 direct jobs on construction alone. The process removes CO2 from heavy industry and power plants and transports it by pipeline to storage sites located several miles under the North Sea. The scheme plans to capture up to 10 million tonnes of CO2 emissions each year, equivalent to the emissions associated with annual energy of up to 3 million UK homes. I can't stress enough the importance of this project in our area. It's set to bring thousands of jobs and prosperity to the families across Teeside. The national significance of this project should not be overlooked. This is groundbreaking technology, which will play a key role in decarbonising the area and it is of great national importance. I was delighted to see how much progress is being made on the More Molean Academy, which is taking shape opposite Redcar Cleveland College. The specialist school will offer extra support for children with social, emotional and mental health needs when it's completed next year. It will replace the Grangestown Specialist Education Facility, which was previously known as Pathways School and has a limited capacity of 66 pupils. The new More Molean Academy will be able to accommodate up to 100 primary and secondary school pupils. At present, more than 40 children in the borough with social, emotional and mental health needs have been educated elsewhere. This means that our children will be centralised and it will reduce the travel. This fantastic new academy will support families in our borough for many years to come. As our thoughts turn to Christmas, I just want to echo what Madam Mayor said about joining the pledge for the Salvation Toy Appeal for the local branches of the Salvation Army. The appeal asks the public to date new toys and gifts so they can be distributed to the local families whose children would otherwise not receive a gift. Due to coronavirus restrictions, you can donate them through JustGiving page or Amazon wishlist or drop off at your new unwrapped presents, gifts please, at various locations across the borough. Can we please speak to Madam Mayor for any further details that you want? And finally, Christmas wouldn't be Christmas without a Christmas light switch on and Madam Mayor's already said that and it's going to be the Great Doorstep Switch on on the 3rd of December between 4pm and 7pm. It's set to be a fun, creative festival way to bring the borough together where everyone can get involved. It's a shame that we can't hold a traditional switch on with a light ceremony, but that's not going to stop us. We want everyone to get involved so that these decorations, get the treats ready, get dressed up and let's all switch on our lights together. As this is the last council meeting this year, I would like to take this opportunity to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and then we can all get back to doing what we need to do and things that we need to love. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Lanigan. Are there any announcements from Cabinet members? Okay, thank you. Item five, announcements from the managing director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, no announcements on this occasion, thank you.
Thank you. Item six is questions from the public, for which notice has been given and none have been received. Item seven, to consider and agree reports from Cabinet and council committees. Please note that the normal rules of debate, including the following time limits apply. The mover of the report may speak for 10 minutes, the seconder may speak for five, the mover may speak for five minutes when summing up the debate. So this is on the new corporate plan? Councillor Glynn Nightingale.
Well, that was a bit of a surprise, I thought it was going to be the leader of the council, but thank you very much.
Oh, beg your pardon, I've got councillor Glynn Nightingale written down. Councillor Lanigan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Really pleased to bring the draft new corporate plan forward today. The corporate plan is important as it sets out the direction of the next three years. It includes clear priorities and commitments to the people of Redcar Cleveland. It makes clear that this administration is going to prioritise tackling climate change and enhancing natural environments, meeting residents' needs, improving the appearance of the borough and enhancing prosperity, investment for long term and helping the borough deal with Covid. The current corporate plan is about to expire, so it's the right time to bring this forward for a new plan. The new plan is deliberately high level and strategic. It includes a new vision, some new values, new priorities to guide our work and some specific commitments to local people. It will steer the budget allocation and it would help us to get things done. As agreed, officers have discussed the draft plan with all political groups, as well as with the independent councillors and a number of changes have been made to the draft plan as a result of some excellent suggestions being made. The main changes are including, the report is follows. One of our core values has been amended, so it reads, "To get the job done to the best of our ability within available resources." The commitment about making the borough carbon neutral has been strengthened and now stresses partnership working. We have given a higher priority and profile to tackling mental health by moving it higher up the list and we have given more visibility to our work to address Covid in the plan. Officers and cabinet members are working hard on the implementation of the plan, which will follow to cabinets in December. Officers will be holding a meeting for members in early December to go through this. In the meantime, I would like to ask that we accept this, Madam Mayor, and it will come to the Borough Council today on November 26th. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Can I second that, Madam Mayor, reserve the right to speak?
Thank you. Okay, do we have any speakers to this report? Councillor Jones, were you wishing to speak on this report?
No, that was earlier on when you said there was no questions or couldn't speak on the matter regarding it, so we'll leave it for now, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you councillor Jones. Okay, there don't appear to be anybody wishing to speak on this item.
So can I speak then, Madam Mayor?
Yes, you may speak now, yes councillor Glynn Nightingale.
I tried too much to the leaders' sync summary there, but quite clearly, we were looking for consensus and this is a step change forward. And it is crucial that we tell the public what the council is doing on their behalf. There are the five key priorities and these will be incorporated in implementation plan that will be presented very soon to the Cabinet. So what we're aiming to achieve, especially after listening to local people and what other members of the council have said, is that we're going to be looking after the environment, people who need our help, the way the borough looks, investing in the future and tackling the recovery from the pandemic. I do want to stress that getting things done is the hallmark of what the implementation will be all about. And that's why it will be brought forward to the next cabinet meeting and shows how much we're trying to streamline the activities of the council and speed up and getting the job done. And that's why we responded to the consultation, especially about the Covid recovery plan and also the stress on the environment. And I think we should be welcoming the fact that councillor Westbury has taken over as a key cabinet post to deal with the environment and the climate change and that in itself is a key indicator of how much stress we do put on dealing with the environment. There will be opportunities for members to have a go at the implementation plan, both through the scrutiny committees and also through a special session that all members will be invited to in the next week or so. So, Madam Mayor, I'm very happy to second this proposal and I hope that we can have absolute, complete consensus on this particular plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Nightingale. If there are no further speakers on this item, I will pass it back to councillor Lanigan to sum up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much indeed, Madam Mayor. I just hope that I'd like this moved at council and I was hoping for the full support of council on this report. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lanigan. Are we all agreed to support this report? Item eight, to receive reports from portfolio holders. And for this meeting, it is the report of the Cabinet Member for Neighbourhoods. This is a question and answer session. There will be a period of 10 minutes or such longer period at the discretion of the mayor will be set aside for questions, which must be succinct and related directly to the matters within the report. And I think councillor Hunt is going to take us through this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, everybody. The portfolio has continued to provide a range of key frontline services throughout the cyber attack and the ongoing challenges resulting from the Covid outbreak. Many of these services are provided by council staff who must be thanked for their continued hard work and dedication. The impact of Covid has had a significant impact on the way services have been delivered with the requirements of social distancing affecting how staff can carry out their day-to-day duties. Covid has also had a direct impact on service needs with demands in some areas increasing, such as waste and recycling or dealing with the backlog where services were suspended for a period of time, green waste example. This will continue to be a feature in the coming months and may require services to be prioritised and adapted in order to respond to changing circumstances. Even with these significant challenges, a great deal has been achieved this year in not only maintaining the vast majority of services but also looking to make improvements wherever possible. The portfolio has a wide and varied remit. For this purpose of the report, I have provided updates for the following services areas: Waste and recycling, street scene services, fleet management, high waste and engineering, community safety and compliance. Waste and recycling. Through 2020, the council fulfilled its statutory duty to ensure that residents' residual waste bins were emptied without disruption. Despite the pressures resulting from Covid, the council continued to provide a fortnightly collection service for all household waste and recycle bins. The green waste collections from properties had to be suspended following lockdown to enable resources to be concentrated on the provision of statutory services. The regular green waste collections were then reintroduced on the 9th of June. The bulky waste had to be suspended, but was brought back and has proved unpopular. I think we're doing 60 odd a day and we've had to add another wagon to the thing to get them done. Yesterday, it was down to eight days in East Cleveland. I think it was seven days in Greater Eston and Redcar was up to 15 days because of circumstances with staff. Today, because there's 36 staff off work, 21 Covid related, it has affected that and East Cleveland's up to 13 days to get your bulky waste, which still isn't bad under the circumstances. Greater Eston's still at seven and Redcar and Mask are at 15. So we really are trying to push and do our job. But as I say, 36 staff off and this isn't the same as last time. This is, it's like up and down. I could have, yesterday there was 34 off, tomorrow I could have 25 off because of people coming back after two weeks and such like, but it still disrupts all the, you know... all the, you know, the delivery of the services. So the Dunstale Household Waste Recycling Centre unfortunately had to close because of Covid and the lockdown in March. The site was reopened in May with major changes made to its operation to ensure that both our employees and residents are safe when they access the site, which was priority. We also took the decision to introduce the requirement for all residents to prove residency in order to access the site. This has meant that non-residents have not been able to dispose of their waste at the site. The site opening hours have been extended so that the site is now open from 800 hours to 1700 hours, Monday to Sunday, making it more accessible and convenient for our residents. The waste tonnages. As a result of Covid, the introduction of the lockdown and the continued emphasis on people working from home, we have seen significant, my tooth's falling out, I think, significant increase in the waste tonnages that are being collected from our residents' properties. Household residual waste is up by 8.28% compared to 2019-20. Recycling tonnages are up by plus 14.13%. This has led to significant changes with achieving zonal clearance throughout the year and has led to an increase to the cost of the treatment and disposal of waste. Right, we're down to. Street scene services. I'm not going to read every bit of this report, otherwise we'll be here. It's quite a very enlarged report, so I'm not going to read, so I'll skip a couple, but street scene services. Covid has a huge impact on our street scene services since the first national lockdown on the 22nd, 23rd of March. The council has had prioritised its activities so that it could move resources to other parts of the services where there were staff shortages. This meant that open space maintenance that was being undertaken had to be drastically scaled back for a number of weeks to allow the council to focus on key services, such as the continued emptying of the litter bins, the removal of fly tipped waste across the borough. The services were then gradually incrementally returned to normal throughout the late spring, early summer. Go on, I'll miss the rest of that. Litter cleaning pressures in the summer. Whilst the unseasonable warm spring and early summer period was a great and very much welcome surprise at the time, it did also lead to some issues with the borough, particularly in our coastal areas. The hot weather led to a large influx of visitors and residents to both Redcar, Saltburn and other seafront areas, which was very positive for the local economy. Disappointingly, the large influx of people did lead to large volumes of waste being left on the beaches and adjacent areas. It is a great shame that our lovely seafront areas were not treated with more respect. And without the help of many volunteers, who I will also mention in my summing up, they've done a brilliant job and we would not have been able to keep the beaches clean during this time, even though our staff were down to, you know, the limits and we did really push ourselves to do it. Additional clean and green staff. The government's Kickstart Scheme is due to commence shortly and has been designed to assist with getting young people, 18 to 24-year-olds into employment by providing them with paid work, experience and training. As part of this initiative, the Environment Portfolio will be receiving 13 Kickstart employees, which will be useful addition to the current operational teams and will allow further environmental improvements to be made across the borough. In addition, we have also resulted in an additional eight people into the Clean and Green Teams to assist with undertaking open space maintenance activities. These additional staff have been focused on undertaking special project work in order to make noticeable improvements with emphasis on the entrance and exits of the villages and towns across the borough. All right, go on to, there's a bit on highways and engineering, excuse me. The highways and engineering team ensures that the council's road network is well maintained and safe throughout ongoing inspections and a range of maintenance programmes. All our safety critical work is now up to date, following the delays of backlog caused by Covid. The highways team have also been assisting with the setup of the C19 test sites, erecting signs, new footpath layouts and helping with additional footpaths outside schools to enable safer access for children. The Capital Port Programme, circa £2 million, will be spent on highway resurfacing with a further £1.4 million recently allocated by the Department of Transport through the Pothole and Challenge Fund. The highways and engineering team are also supporting many of the regeneration processes, which the borough offering technical advice as well as delivering schemes on the ground. Right, enforcement, the new rapid enforcement team. We have recruited a new rapid enforcement team with three-year funding. The new team will be responsive to the issues identified by the community safety groups and will provide a find and fix area-based approach to enforcement. The new team will work closely with partners and aim to reduce both environment and antisocial behaviour. They will do this by using all available enforcement tools, including fines, community protection notices, targeting hardening, you know, put cameras, increased patrols, with the aim of finding permanent solutions rather than continually reacting to issues. I think they've already made a difference in fines that have been issued since they've been on, so. Right, parking pressures.
Can you about sum up?
We have.
Councillor Hunt, can you be ready to sum up?
Yep, I certainly will.
Thank you.
Well, there's so much more to go. I can leave that at that. As we know, these reports, I'm at two minutes, two seconds? As we know, these reports are put together by. Right, I'm just going to say that they're put together by officers and senior management and projected by me to yourselves. I will try to answer any questions, but it's such a wide range and varied portfolio, I will try to give answers. If I can't, I will certainly get back to people. So I would hope that people think on. All right, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hunt. Okay, yes, we do have a few questions for you. And first of all, councillor Corley, can you ask your question, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you councillor Hunt for a full report. My question is, and I know it was in our report cluster's environment, so it was very broad, as you say, so I would just like the reassurance from councillor Hunt and that side that the task and finish group that was set up regarding climate change is starting again sooner rather than later regarding the meetings, because I know the meetings haven't quite gone ahead due to Covid, but I would like them set up sooner, especially as we took the motion in full council to get that and make that a priority of the council. And I do know that with the shift around with the administration, that is looked at, but I would like it to be sooner rather than later, please. So thank you. I just also wanted to know why it wasn't in the report if it's named as environment. Obviously, climate change is a big one for the borough. Thank you councillor Hunt. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Corley. Councillor Hunt?
Well, I agree with you and I would endeavour to look at and try to get the, the meeting set up as soon as possible, because I feel that it's very important for the climate change and the committee is doing a good job of doing, you know, doing things. So it's very important to the council and I will make sure that we get them as soon as possible. The actual environment question that you looked at there. Why it wasn't in the report, I don't really know. As I said, that's done by, it's all put together by directors and everything. But the environment has been moved over to another portfolio and taken off me. So I can't really give you an answer to that, but I will promise you that I will look into the committees and hopefully get them back on track as soon as possible.
Thank you councillor Hunt. Councillor Jones, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi Barry, it's more of a comment than a question, really. Many thanks for your report and I'm glad to see that, as a cabinet member, that you're keeping a close eye on the response times for the large junk job items and since the new teams come on board, we've had a positive effect on reducing the turnaround times and response times of the jobs. I have had communications with several residents in our ward regarding the amount of time it takes from reporting the junk jobs to, you know, a girl, I said, well, ring it up, report it to the local authority and they'll remove it for this X amount of fee which has been reduced. Oh, that it was the 6th of December or something, that was like a few weeks ago, before we can get it picked up. So it's nice to see that response times are coming down and that you're keeping an eye on those, so thank you very much for that. It's something positive. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Jones. Councillor Hunt, do you want to say anything there? Shall we move on to the next question?
Well, I'd just like to say thank you for giving us a little bit of praise and we are trying to keep, get them right down to at least a couple of, couple of weeks, which isn't too bad for the amount of doing 60 a day is not bad. So thank you councillor Jones.
Thank you councillor Hunt. Councillor Gallagher, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Hunt, obviously paragraph six and 6.3, 6.4 are a bit lean on facts and information. And I'm looking at the paragraph 6.31 and the transport through the Pothole Challenge Fund. And I'm just wondering whether the challenge fund is some sort of a competition, like the postcode lottery. If you see somebody filling in a pothole, if you reported, you get a prize. Because I haven't seen anyone doing any yet round my neck of the woods. So could we have some detail as to what's been filled in, what roads have been repaired? So we have some idea, the same with the schemes and the regeneration. There's no information regarding what schemes have been dealt with, how they've been dealt with and how they're progressing. So a little bit more enlightenment within the report as to the actuality of what's going on would be beneficial. Thank you.
That's one of the things councillor Gallagher, that I just cannot answer straight away on this, but I promise you tomorrow morning I will get you an answer and email it or phone you and give you an answer for you. You know, for me, some of these things I just cannot put on figures and things like that, you just, I just can't do it. So I will, but I will promise you that I take it all on board and I will get back to you tomorrow. Is that okay councillor Gallagher?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you Barry. And again, if someone's filling a hole in, let me know and I'll go and see it. And award a prize for it.
Try again, try again. Councillor Watts, please.
Thank you Chair. A couple of things. The first one is the Dunstale tip. Do we know when the sewage work is going to finish? And does that automatically mean that we can finish with the appointment system? The second question was on the under-Covid responses. You mentioned monitoring in the community. If we don't start actually enforcing some of the rules, we're not going to reduce the increase in Covid. People are blatantly breaking the rules and we're all paying for that. Just one last one. You mentioned then that environment had gone into another portfolio. Could you tell us who has the portfolio for environment? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Watts. Councillor Hunt? There you go.
Yes.
There you go.
Yeah, well, your first one, it should be finished this next week. And although they've laid a pipeline, we've been doing this for a couple of weeks now. It's worked with the, I've got to say that the booking system has worked, but we have been taking people that, rather than turning them away, we've kept them off the highways by doing it. I prefer, well, I prefer to have people to be able to go to the tip anytime they want without booking, but the booking system has been working. They're on, I think they're on the main road now, but they have a traffic, traffic light system, but that has nothing to do with us at the tip. The thing with the Covid, I just mentioned because our, our officers were helping, you know, set it up, the Covid thing has nothing to do with my portfolio. So I can't give you any information on actual the Covid system, but it's, my mention was that, that we'd helped setting the, the systems up by, you know, putting signs up, pathways and things like that. So I would think the, the other cabinet member for it would, would come in on that. The third, the. Who's the environment gone to? I think it was mentioned by councillor Nightingale about the welcoming on board. So I just, the names just slipped my mind.
Councillor Westbury.
Yes, Westbury, councillor Westbury. I'm so sorry councillor Westbury. My head's puddled. So it's councillor Westbury that's taken over the environment. So that's, that's all I can give you and I'm sorry.
Thank you councillor Hunt. Bring in councillor Holyoke, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your report Barry. This is really just a bit of reassurance that people have been asking me locally. Is that obviously because of the situations at the moment, a lot more people are buying online, which sadly, you know, but we're all having to do it. So obviously that's generating an awful lot more cardboard. Now I find that our fantastic teams, when I bag mine in clear bags, I've got excess sideways, have been taking it. Are they going to be, continue to be sympathetic to that over Christmas?
Councillor Hunt, thank you councillor Holyoke.
Yes, I'm quite sure we are. We're trying to be sympathetic with, with black bags, everything we're trying to. We understand, you know, what people, and especially with everybody working from home, we're getting more and more things put out. And we are trying to take everything we possibly can. And yes, I will also make sure of that and pass it on tomorrow to our staff so that they keep on doing that.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Hunt. Can I bring in councillor Quartermaine, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your report there councillor Hunt. I would agree with councillor Gallagher, actually. The report, in its essence, doesn't have a huge lot of meat on the bones there, you know, in terms of comparable data and statistics, that kind of thing, performance indicators. So I'd ask that you go back to the reporting team, the director of the department and ask next time, please, to put a bit more emphasis on the detail there. But I appreciate, you know, the, the depth and the length of the information that you provided. And again, I would like to take this opportunity now to thank the department and thank, you know, particularly, you know, like the Clean and Green Team, the Important Team, et cetera, who have worked incredibly hard under such difficult circumstances this year. And even to the point where, you know, where, where they've had to, you've had to shuffle the staff around and they've helped with other departments and delivering other, other, other things as well. So that's really, really appreciated. And I thank your comments as well in relation to volunteers. Because, you know, people have stepped up during this time, particularly, as you say, you know, out there on the beaches and in our streets and alleys with the litter pickers. And there was a real call to arms there, one that went out a couple of times on social media. And people really did come out of their houses. did come out of their houses to help. And it was really gratifying to see that. In terms of the report, what I've seen, you pointed to increased costs due to COVID in relation to waste, over 8% on residual waste and over 14% on recycled waste. Also, we've had to hire in vehicles to keep our staff safe and socially distanced when they're out doing the work. So these are, these are probably huge costs that we've incurred. But I'd like to know how much do these increased costs equate to? And are these costs being covered by central government, who did promise from the outset that they would ensure no council would suffer as a consequence to COVID-19? So I'd like to know what those costs were, Barry, and if they're going to be covered by central government. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Quartermaine. Councillor Hunt?
As you know, doing your reports and things, you rely on information and everything. And you will have done that in the past yourself. I take on board what you're saying. The thing about the costs is exactly the same as what I said to councillor. I will have to get back to you. And you know, I will, because every time you contact me, I try to do my best to help with whatever. So I will get back to you with them again tomorrow. Or if I can get them tomorrow, I will get back to you on that. So, but I do take on board everything you've said. And again, I will be saying something about the volunteers in my summing up. So, but without them, we couldn't have happened, we couldn't have done, you know, we couldn't have worked. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hunt. Can I bring in now councillor Lanigan, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Hunt, thank you very much for your report. I notice, I know, I know there's a lot in your report. And I'm leading with Tees Valley Energy Recover Facility at the moment because you've got such a lot on. Just to let members know that we are on track with this. And we did have nine international companies that came in. They're now down to three, and three bidders. And this will be, the contract should be awarded in 2021 going forward. And I'm quite sure, councillor Hunt, that you will agree with me, the amount of work that has actually gone into this. We've got not only the five Teeside authorities, we've got Newcastle City Council and Durham. And it is well on track, just to let the members aware. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lanigan. Councillor Hunt?
Well, thank you for stepping in there, Mary, because I didn't say anything about it because you have been dealing with it. It was just in the report for information. So I didn't comment on it, but thank you for coming in and taking that.
Thank you, councillor Hunt. Can we now bring in councillor Thompson, please?
Thank you, Madam Gallagher. We've got two questions. Firstly, on recycling. We've talked before about what measures we are considering. Our performance is no better than it was in 2007. COVID time isn't a good time to be talking about revolution. But we need to be much more conversant as members with what our aspirations are and our specific policies are going to be in order to improve our recycling performance. One example of where we are failing completely is if one went down to the Jewell Streets in Saltburn, not one blue bin has a Caddy in it. So there is no way that you're going to achieve recycling performance of any note. So my first question, Barry, is can we reconsider our position on a task and finish panel to look in detail with officers what measures need to be in place so this can again be the first in the North East, which is what we were in 2007? That's my first question. Second question relates to the parking review that is being undertaken. One of the best ways to get the best out of the poor capacity that we have in Saltburn is to have better turnover in the car parks. At the Catnab car park, I asked for a charging system of one pound per hour irrespective of length of stay. We introduced a totally different system. There was no consultation of ward members. The net effect is that we are hardly getting any turnover in the car park. And of course, no increase in real revenue. The Pier car park, which we asked to be short stay, remained at long stay. Again, no better turnover. So the ask is, when we're having this parking review, can ward members be involved in the discussions and the decision making?
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Councillor Hunt?
Yes, councillor Thompson, as you know, you contact nearly every day doing your job, asking about this and that and the other with Saltburn. And I agree with you, the Jewell Streets, we are trying. And as you know, we talk back to you. The officers are quite in regular contact with you. But I agree, but the Caddy, the Caddy thing is happening all over the borough. I mean, I never brought the Caddy thing in. So I haven't got to, you know, I just think it's a waste of time at the moment because to say that they get pinched, they get used for other things, they're very hard to keep replacing. So I agree with you. The task and finish thing, I agree as well. And we will look into that and do, well, do what you ask. I will try to get you the figures, whatever. And yeah, next thing about the car parking, councillor Thompson, I only took over the highways not long back. And I didn't set any of these in place. So I'm just catching up with a load of stuff. And again, I'll get back to you on anything to do with the car park. And I'm, again, we're quite happy to come down and meet you. We know what you suggested. So I can only try and get back to you on the car parks because it's a bad situation. And we should be maybe making more money on them. But I will get back to you and quite happily come and meet you when we can, Phil.
Thank you, councillor Hunt. Bringing councillor Hanaway now, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for your report, councillor Hunt. Could I just ask about the crowds that we're getting on Saltburn Seafront, most of whom are not social distancing at all? You've put signs there and they're, you know, they're very clear, but they're mainly being ignored. And given that we're going into tier three, is there more that we could do in the way of barriers, footprints on the floor, crowd, you know, queue control measures, stewards, that we could do to try and keep people safe? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hanaway. Councillor Hunt?
Councillor Hanaway, keeping people as safe is the priority, no matter what, health and safety. I believe that we have got some, they're not wardens. I don't know what we're calling them. They're, I think we've got about seven that are going to be contacting people and talking to people. Maybe, you know, instead of just having one here and one there, we could maybe have a thing where we have a blitz on certain areas. We can never tell people what to do because they just won't do it. And that's been proven by why we're in this situation. But the signs are up, they are quite clear. We can't stop people coming. But we will certainly look at these, talking to these, they don't come into my portfolio either. So I will look at my side and see if our officers can do something as well. But I agree with you. And it's, it's not going to get any easier. This, this next period's going to be horrendous. But people will do what they'll do. They won't take any notice, no, no matter what. You can, you could say, well, you'll be shot on the streets if you're out, but they'll still find a way to go out and go to parties and things. So, but I will try my hardest. And I do agree with you, the safety is the priority of people and our staff. So I will try to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hunt. Councillor Gallagher, do you have a second question?
It was to councillor Lanigan when she made the comments regarding the Wastheat facility. Has she taken questions on that topic? Or was that just a?
No, not on this, not, not, not on this agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've reached the end of the questions on this item. So thank you, councillor Hunt, for your very full report. And we'll move on to item nine of the agenda, which is to consider motions. So the usual.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, did you want me to sum?
No, there's not usually the necessity for you to sum up. It's just a question and answer.
Right. Well, just before I go, can I just thank, thank all our staff that have worked and pulled the puddings out for it and every volunteer? Because without them, we couldn't have done anything. That's short and sweet. It's, it's less than what I wanted to say, but thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hunt. I think we all echoed those thoughts and those thanks. Thank you. So, item nine, the usual rules of debate apply. The proposer of the motion or an amendment can speak for up to 10 minutes. All other speeches are five minutes. Voting will be by way of a roll call. So motion is moved by councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I could give you notice, I don't intend to speak for 10 minutes. Hopefully, the motion is set out clearly. The announcement that the government is intending to bring forward the date at which no new cars that are propelled by internal combustion to 2030, I think, should be welcome to everyone in the country, but in particular to residents of Redcarl, Cleveland, whose behalf we as Borough Council have declared a climate emergency. And our target is to be carbon neutral by 2030. So the announcement nationally of this proposal is most welcome. However, it isn't simply going to be about having only electric vehicles on the road. It's about the sale of electric vehicles. And my understanding is that the sale of internal combustion engines, whilst that stops in 2030, they will still be selling hybrids until 2035. And we have no powers at the moment to stop any vehicles that have propulsion through internal combustion actually being on the road. So that's something we need to be thinking about. So the second element of that is that the intention is to have that introduced by 2030. Now, we, as I've just said previously, in March 2019, declared a climate emergency. And we set up a task and finish panel subsequently in order to deliver against that objective. So my concern is that although the government has proposed a principle, we still collectively have to see how that can be effected in practice in terms of how these vehicles are going to be supplied with power locally. Now, we can do that in two ways primarily. One is through individual house owners having their own charging facilities. And for most vehicles, you can actually use a very basic powerpoint supply, although dependent on the vehicle that you own, the rate of charge will vary considerably. But apart from domestic charging, there has to be an infrastructure in place to allow anyone on the road to recharge, and that's private individuals and commercial vehicles. Because one of our aspirations is to encourage tourism, we disproportionately will have many, many more vehicles coming into the borough than one borough which does not promote tourism. Therefore, the infrastructure that we need to have in place has to take that into account. The task and finish panel, climate change, has been sitting, although not recently, we've spoken about that earlier in the meeting. And the promise to have that brought forward for its next meeting is most welcome. The climate change task and finish panel has had, I think, tremendous success in creating greater awareness among those panel members. The chairman of the task and finish panel has brought a wide range of interest parties to members' notice. And I think the discussions have gone exceptionally well. However, what we have not been able to do so far is set milestones. So that by 2030, we are actually in a position to deliver. And we shouldn't be chasing up the road in 2029 trying to catch up. So that investment needs to be made at an appropriate time with the appropriate resources so that we have a planned campaign to do all the right things that we've talked about in some detail to achieve 2030 carbon neutral. We've heard earlier this afternoon about the carbon capture programme and how the government has supported the initial investment in the carbon capture programme here on Teeside to the extent of £200 million. Most of us hopefully returned the consultation papers, which allowed net zero Teeside to get full planning approval. But that now has to be invested in and the construction to start. I understand that the proposals that we had presented to the task and finish panel, another good example, was that they were going to complete by 2026 and hopefully be in production by 2027. So if you allow a little bit of slippage, they are certainly within the 2030 that we would hope them to be. But we haven't talked about the detail of where the infrastructure needs to be to service electric vehicles. We have been advised from time to time that there's varying views on where we should have charging points and how many we should have. But I have, I personally have not yet seen a map which says these are where all the charging points are going to be, the timescale of implementation and the cost associated with that. Now, we know very well, and for those people who've been listening to Mazars, they will know that this local authority has little, if any, reserves that are available for redirection. So any capital investment that we're going to have to make, I say have to make, in order to have the infrastructure in place, is going to have to come from somewhere. It's a government plan. It's a government proposal. They've already been supportive of the carbon capture programme and we welcome that. So my ask is that we identify what we need in terms of infrastructure. We identify when we're going to need it by. We quantify that in terms of cost. And we have a borrowing programme put in place to allow that to be implemented. Now, the borrowing doesn't have to be necessarily a cost borne by Redcarl, Cleveland. If the national government... If the national government is advocating that we reach this target in the time that it is. So my ask would be that we do all that identification and then speak with the government to inquire off them where the funding is going to come to allow that to be implemented. Now, we were advised that there was somewhere in the order, I think of 2.47 billion pounds available for implementation of projects for research and development to allow the carbon neutral status of 2030 to be arrived at. I don't know where all that money sits. So the ask really of the motion is that we do our homework, ascertain what is needed, and then we ask for that money. I've also asked in the motion that the task and finish panel uh continue with the viable work that it's doing, but to set out milestones that are guided by the discussions that have been had so far and I'm sure will continue to be had. So that members can be assured that there will be key elements that need to be achieved and the time that they need to be achieved in. So that the carbon neutral status will be achieved as we've set up. That, I think, simply, Madam Mayor, is the tenet of the motion, which I will be glad to propose.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Do we have a seconder for this motion, please?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Do you wish to speak?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh let's see who's there first. Um councillor Quarterman, you'd like to speak on the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And um yeah, I mean, the government come across as being really ambitious with this. And as part of this Green Deal um ten point plan of Boris Johnson's. Well, the reality is, we know that the funding that they're putting forward for this, and uh councillor Thompson alluded to that 4.5 billion, um it's it's not nearly enough. Um it falls well short of what's going to be required. And hence, the need for a motion like this, where we need to be asking central government to step up, we need to be looking at our own budget therefore um in the future for the future, because um it's clearly not going to be enough for us. Um undoubtedly, this borough is going to need uh the extra support um from central government to ensure that we're ready for this, uh ready for the conversion. Challenge of the industry is also to make the make electric vehicles more affordable. Um at the moment, there's a huge gulf uh in the difference between the pricing between electric vehicles and petrol and diesel. Um and also, um we were also going to need more charge points obviously for that um into the future. Um the target set for 2030 um is to ban the sale of petrol and diesel vehicles. Uh it doesn't mean that we won't be still be using petrol um uh. And I think this is, this is part, going to be part of the problem going forward. Because in reality, people won't be able to convert. Um and you'll still be able to sell second hand cars um that are petrol and diesel. So it doesn't put a ban on these vehicles from 2030. So there there needs to be more tighter legislation around that. Um electric charge points will become um the number one street scene change in the future, which will mean um charging will be commonplace all over the everywhere, retail, hospitality, pubs, restaurants, um gyms, all kinds of different services and also from from home. But not everybody's going to have access to um off street parking there, are they? So again, you know, you know, there's talk about um conversions where it can pop out of the curb or from um street uh lampposts and service boxes, that kind of thing. So, you know, this is going to be a huge cost just to this council, councils up and down the the country to put that infrastructure into place, we'll need that funding. Um in relation to the motion, it probably didn't go far enough um in reality, but I don't see any um. I have got no exception to it, so I'll be supporting this law. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Quarterman. Councillor Kay, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I'm glad it seems that we're going to all get behind this. Many of us might query many aspects of government policy, but sometimes it's possible, remotely possible, if they might get something right. And I'm pleased that Philip Thompson, as leader of the Conservative group, he's often sort of lukewarm about national conservative policy, but he has come out here and uh supported them when, in principle at least, they deserve some support. Uh however, I do uh feel that it's the government who should be doing their homework on this. You know, we should be consultees as far as I'm concerned, because it's going to be a national thing, not a Redcar and Cleveland thing. And Boris, well, if Boris is still around by then, he probably won't be. The Conservatives should have learnt to plan more scrupulously uh after all the errors they seem to have made in recent times. But I think it's a laudable ambition 2030. But I don't think we want to be sort of dragging it down to uh whether our task, it's almost as if the government is waiting uh with bated breath on the decision of our task and finish panel on this particular issue. You know, this is a national matter and I'm sure even the Conservative government will plan it nationally and will consult us in the in the process. So um yes, I would support this, but I think we've got to look a bit broader than just our Redcar and Cleveland interests, defending those interests, but including it in uh as far as possible in a a national strategy.
Thank you councillor Kay. Councillor Hanaway, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I must say, I do enjoy listening to a Conservative telling us how to be more green. Uh given that we know that the Conservative Party was donated a million pounds by the fossil fuel industry to fight the last general election. And that um Conservative MPs have a huge amount registered in donations, shares, salaries, gifts and tickets to sporting events from fossil fuel companies, petrol states, aviation companies and climate skeptics. But never mind, let us um welcome this late conversion um to uh the importance of these issues by by the party. I'm glad you could make it. This is a good, good motion, um but I think the issue is that it's only a small part of the picture, because if we have more electric vehicles and more of them plugging in, that means more electricity supply. Um and presumably um with the new green credentials, you won't want those to be um done with fossil fuels. So in these islands, that that means more wind turbines. Uh I have it on good authority that we could, um if we entirely surrounded the British Isles with with um wind turbines, we could um it we, it could be 100% of our supply, particularly with improvements in battery technology now. Um but given that 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 is what it means, um it'd be interested to know um in councillor Thompson's summing up, if he would support um as many wind turbines as it takes really to provide the extra uh supply that would be necessary, you know, for the for the mass distribution of um electric vehicles. Um and secondly, I have to agree with councillor Quarterman and councillor Kay that um you know, why should the council have to borrow this money? If it is as important as Boris Johnson now says it is, why can't they give us the money upfront uh to do this work, particularly as after so, after so much austerity, it is now very difficult for the council to set off on any large scale projects without having um funding upfront, or at least some of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Hanaway. I'm bringing councillor Sue Jeffrey, please.
Thanks, thanks very much, Madam Mayor. And can I say first of all that um I too welcome this motion. I think it's really important that this is an authority, that we are looking at the practicalities of how we actually reach the 2030 target that we've given ourselves. Um but it is going to be very, very difficult. And I think what this motion highlights is just how difficult it's going to be. We had a budget, if that's what you can call it, yesterday, a spending review announcement, that said basically the Chancellor, despite Covid, instead of investing in our public services, is going to make £10 billion worth of cuts in public services. And I think this authority has discovered recently, hasn't it? That actually you can't maintain services and replenish reserves on the amount of cash that this government is giving us, it's just completely impossible. We also know that capital spend across the authority has been restricted um because we can't afford to carry on borrowing. And I I really can't see how it would be possible for us to fund um an electric vehicle charging infrastructure. If you just look at the hugely expensive Skelton car park that we saw recently, um you'll see that the cost of four electric vehicle charging points there costs £28,500. Um you'll be aware TV and lighting, but it's obviously an absolutely huge amount of cash. So where do we look for then to the cash to actually provide this infrastructure? Well, I would have suggested that it was government that we would be looked to. And in the National Infrastructure Strategy that was also published yesterday, they announced 1.5 billion pounds worth of funding um was needed for this infrastructure, um the charging infrastructure. Now, I have no idea how we get our share of that to this authority. Um and I don't think there was any instructions in the infrastructure strategy about how you do that. Um is it a bidding process? Is it something where we have to um say that we need it more than anybody else? But like all of these things, what we're seeing yet again is a claim to want to be clean and green, to looking to um be 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 right there at the top of the the green agenda for the purposes of the COP conference that's coming up in Glasgow in November. But actually, where is the substance that sits behind it? So yes, councillor Thompson, I support you absolutely. Um I think this is really, really important. But like the carbon capture and storage thing that you're talking about as well, again, really good to see 200 million are made made available for that. I have to say that goes across four schemes across the country, though it's not all coming to us, I don't think. And also, what it requires is a hugely sympathetic regulatory regime and all sorts of permissions and agreements from government to make it work. So again, that one's not a done deal, it needs that investment. So what I would say to everybody is, yeah, let's support this, but we have to put our pressure on this government to actually put their money where their mouth is, because they're not doing it. And also, just just as a final point, I do question whether or not putting an infrastructure in for um individual vehicles is the right way to go about this and whether in fact our focus should be on ensuring we have green public transport. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Councillor Gallagher, please.
I'd probably surprise everybody in the the council chamber that I'm against this uh motion. Not uh basic, because it's not our policy, it's a government policy. And we're wasting our time and effort discussing it because we'll have no input whatsoever. It'll be rolled out nationally. A large company will be given the project of installing this system and they will clean off the top as they do, as they're doing with the cars, councillor Quarterman. They're not affordable for a reason, because the companies make money off them. This is the next gold mine. This is the follow on from your cars and your petrol when they made the money. And of course, what they're not taking into account also is hydrogen. Hydrogen's coming along, it's going to be far cheaper than electricity, it's going to be cleaner than electricity, and they will take over. So in 10 years' time, if you've got an electric car, you bought scrap. Yeah, hydrogen will be the fuel of the future. Big business says this, BP, Shell, everybody is weighing into it. So planning on electric plugins uh is, you know, isn't going to be an issue, because you won't need it, you'll need hydrogen fill-ups. Uh and that's where it's going to go. We have very little uh surplus capacity in our energy production in this country at the moment. Everybody bought a car tomorrow, electricity plugged it in, everything would stop, we'd all be browned out for days. So, you know, no point rushing to get your plugs in, because it ain't going to happen. I mean, how many have put their plugs in? You could have had a free 1500 socket uh 18 months ago from the manufacturers that have put it in your house. How many have got it? You know, and those that have got it don't use it. So I'm afraid I won't be putting my hand up, Philip, although I I understand your your motives and laudable though they are, I think it's probably something we're not really that involved with in terms of as a council. We've got more important issues. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gallagher. Um councillor Lanigan, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Philip, thank you very much for your motion and I will be supporting this. Because I think actually what you said there, demanding it's the right way to go. From a Redcar and Cleveland point of view, we've now got Chris Moon there as senior officer and he will be leading with councillor Westbury um on issues that we've got here. I'm going to ask that we reshape the task and finish group um that we've got at the moment, because I think it needs some teeth. And I think that they need to have more authority sat in there where we can lobby. Um I understand that this money coming in from central government, it will be a bidding process. Um we have asked for further details on this to see exactly where we can get hold of it. I know this is very difficult at the moment and difficult for councillor Thompson um here, but it is a government initiative. There doesn't seem to be anything behind that that's allowing um the councils of, not coming out with a lump sum for each of the councils in order to do this. But that's my understanding, that this money from central government, you've got to bid for it. Um and you can imagine right across the country, councillor Gallagher uh is quite right in its assumption with hydrogen, because that is the way forward. That doesn't mean to say that Redcar and Cleveland council can't do something to try to reshape, to make some recommendations, to see what we can do with the limited funds that we've got at the moment. So I will be supporting you on this, councillor Thompson. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Lanigan. So as we have no more speakers to the motion, I shall hand it back to councillor Thompson for five minutes summing up.
Sorry, sorry, Madam Mayor, I did indicate in the chat question that I wish to speak.
Ah, I haven't seen that, I do apologize.
Sorry.
Right, okay, we can't see it at this end, sorry.
Yeah, so sorry, I've had technical difficulties today, as ever.
As ever. Um so councillor Thompson, if you are okay for councillor Ovens to just uh speak first.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Ovens, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll be extremely brief, because what I was going to say, a lot of it has already been said. Um I uh will be supporting this, because I think that's what's on the table at the moment. We're not quite sure when all of the hydrogen will roll out or how um costly that would be. But I do have concerns about the um generating sufficiently electricity, because we're being urged to move to a digital age, increasing digital age, and there's more and more demand on the national grid. And we need to be getting right from the government how we are going to source that, whether it's going to be all wind farms, whether we're starting to have another look at uh nuclear or what we're doing there and how that affects the climate. Uh the other point was about affordability, I think that's already been mentioned. And finally, it's the practicalities of it. Because um if you live in certain situations and you perhaps don't have a garage where you can have a plug in point, uh you're in the middle of a terrace or whatever, I think it will be extremely difficult to get plugged in and you'd be wandering around trying to find a charging point somewhere. Uh so that that's it. It's a concern about the practicalities, the government needs to go and sort some of those fundamentals out and tell us how they're going to resolve them. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor. Thank you, councillor Ovens. Okay, councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Several points. I'd just like to say thank you for the majority indicating support for the motion, although tempered in some cases. Just taking the last point first, that councillor Ovens had made. Yes, this is a practical challenge, but it won't go away if we don't discuss it. And it won't be resolved by someone in Whitehall thinking about where I can charge my car on Cotum Road. We need to have these discussions locally, so that when we're making the bid in the bidding process, that we have a conviction that we've done our homework, we've identified what we need genuinely, we've put a cost to it, so that we know with conviction that what we're asking for is what we need. Now, whether we get that money or not, remains to be seen. But there's a piece of work that has to be done. Now, that piece of work, who's it going to be done by? I'm very grateful to the leader for indicating that the task and finish panel, which has, as I said previously, been meeting, and I think very successfully under the leadership of its current chair, to look at the parameters. But what we haven't had is any powers. So giving the task and finish panel a little bit more teeth, sounds to me very positive. We're not expecting the task and finish panel to become some sort of directorate. But that's where the discussion is currently taking place. That discussion needs to be expanded. The invitation is there for all members to participate if they so wish. So it's really important that that dialogue takes place. There were some questions asked about whether I would be in favour of all electric being supplied entirely by wind turbines. My understanding, and it's only my understanding, that that is, in the short term, and even medium term, an impossibility. So whether one might think it's a good idea, there are going to be other means of generating power. So that, yes, the fossil fuel fraternity will be not necessarily selling fossil fuels in the near future. But if one looks at what they are doing, much maligned as they might be in certain places, they are, quote, going green. So collectively, we have to be picking up this button and running with it. Now, councillor Jeffrey did ask about was all the money going that had been announced coming here? My understanding is that £350 million of carbon capture money was announced, 200 of that will be coming to Teesside. So that's my understanding. I would also like to say that, from the point of view of what the task and finish panel is doing, the motion asks that we set out milestones, so that we can see where we need to be, and therefore are in a better position to arrive on time. Clearly, the government wishes to push the green agenda. I can't see anyone in this council having voted for it, that they're going to object to that. I don't think that government should be telling us where we should be putting our power points. That's something that we need to identify. So there has to be a dialogue within the borough, within this council, but with government, so that we are not pooling apart, we're pooling together. So I urge all members, including councillor Gallagher, if they will support the principles of this motion, and encourage the task and finish panel to set the milestones that we need to have in place, so that as we pass them, we cheer, and as we look ahead, we are inspired. Therefore, I have pleasure in proposing the motion today. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Apologies for that. Thank you, councillor Thompson. Now, to ascertain whether a roll call vote is necessary, are there any other members who do not wish to support this motion, please? Okay, in that case, I think, oh, there's one. Are there any others, just very quickly? Okay, I think it's fair to say that we can carry this motion. Thank you very much for your participation in that motion. Thank you. Now, item 10 is an information report from the governance director and monitoring officer on the review of proportionality and the distribution of seats. This is a report from the governance director, but will only need to be formally moved and seconded. Do we have somebody to move the report?
I'll move that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, that's councillor Glynn Nightingale. And do we have a seconder for this report?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lanigan. Are we all in agreement to move this report, please? Anybody against? Okay, thank you very much. That report is moved, thank you. Item 11 on the agenda, whether there are vacancies or changes in appointment to appoint members of council bodies and representatives to serve on other bodies to which members are appointed by the council, and to approve any changes to committee membership, and to appoint chairs and vice-chairs where appropriate. I think the changes have all been circulated. There are six changes. Can we agree to all the changes which have been circulated? Councillor Watts?
Just one point, because I asked, once we had the other list out, what happened to the vacant seats? And I was told that they were being kept vacant, waiting to see, waiting for next election, whenever we can have it. So I was surprised to see that suddenly we'd fill them in.
Is that correct? Right, okay, thank you. As I understand it, it is not the vacant seats that are being held for forthcoming by-elections. It is to fill the vacant seats from councillor Westbury's appointment, to be replaced by councillor King.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So just to affirm, are we agreed to the changes which have been circulated? Okay, that looks as though we are all in favour of that. Good. Great, thank you. Moving on then, to item 12, which is to reply to questions from members of the council. One question has been received from councillor Hanaway to councillor Glynn Nightingale, the cabinet member for resources. Councillor Hanaway, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Nightingale, given the large number of independent cafes in the borough, why did my copy of Redcar in Cleveland magazine come through the letterbox with a Costa coffee leaflet tucked inside? And what revenue did the authority earn for providing a distribution service to Costa, please?
Thank you, councillor Hanaway. Councillor Glynn Nightingale?
Thank you very much for the question. It would probably help members of the council and the public to understand how the council's magazine reaches them. First of all, the council did not arrange for this leaflet, or any other leaflet, to be inserted into the Redcar in Cleveland magazine. Furthermore, the council did not receive any income from this or any other leaflet. Next, the magazine was delivered by the Royal Mail. They confirmed that items can be sent out with up to seven separate and non-competitive items when deliveries are made. On this occasion, they believe that one of the Costa leaflets slipped into the magazine when the bundle of leaflets was removed from a bag. Royal Mail say that this is a rare occasion, and offered their apologies for what happened. So I hope councillor Hanaway will now accept that the council has in no way been responsible for the delivery of a Costa leaflet. On the issue of independent businesses, I'm sure that members will be aware that the council supports business in the borough. As an example, during the Covid-19 pandemic, our staff has worked tirelessly to administer and provide government grants quickly to businesses when it was needed most. They are continuing to distribute the latest round of funding alongside their day jobs. In the run-up to Christmas last year, the council's Place Marketing Initiative encouraged residents to shop locally. This year, as Christmas approaches, people will be urged to shop safely as well as locally. As the Covid-19 restrictions continue, the council leader has consistently lobbied the government to ensure the best possible financial support for all businesses in the borough. This council's Business Growth Team has continued to assist businesses to start up and grow throughout the pandemic. This support will be vital once we move out of restrictions, and I'm sure that there is a consensus among members in seeking to preserve local jobs and livelihoods, and to move our economy to prosperous times.
Apologies.
You're unmuted again.
Yes, I don't know. I think somebody else is doing it to me. Thank you, councillor Nightingale. Councillor Hanaway, do you have a supplementary question, please?
I'm relieved to hear. Thank you for your answer, councillor Nightingale. I'm relieved to hear that it was a mistake, given that it is hard enough, isn't it, at this time for small businesses to survive. So I'm relieved to hear that the council is not promoting Costa coffee, given that they don't recycle most of their cups, and given that they lobbied the government against the latte levy of 25p tax on plastic cups, and got their way as well. So thank you very much for that. I'm much relieved.
Thank you, councillor Hanaway. Okay, so that brings this council meeting to a close, and it just remains for me to wish everybody a very happy Christmas, and a much better 2020.
Excuse me, Carol, councillor Quartermaine has requested to put something under any other business.
Oh, right. There is no any other business. I can't see who's speaking to me.
There is one, now.
Sorry, I do apologize, but it's not permitted on council meetings.
Madam Mayor, can I make a point of order then?
Councillor Quartermaine?
Thank you. It's just, I felt at the beginning there, we had a minute's silence for our engineer, and rightly so. But it wasn't appropriate for me to interject at that time, I don't think, to give a tribute to the loss of our friend Julie Donaldson, who worked very closely with this council for many years. And she was inspiring, and she was very much part of events that the council participated in, and helped to deliver those events. I think it's appropriate to just have a few words for our friend here, because, you know, we've lost a beautiful soul there, and we're all completely devastated. She was a real ambassador for this town, for this borough. She was a reassuring voice every morning on our radios. She started each day with a lighter side of life, with good humour, anecdotes and stories. And, you know, even right up to the end, I was in touch with her before she went into hospital, and through messaging during. And I know that even in hospital, she was full of good humour. She was teaching nurses all the recent new swear words that were coming out. So, you know, she was in good voice. But as well as being really witty, she was gracious and thoughtful, and extremely gracious with her time. I was so fortunate to be in her company many times over the years, with interviews. And, you know, she was just good company to be around. And watching her perform at live events at Christmas, and on stage with her selfie stick, and how she would, you know, bring people together, and get people to feel comfortable. And she supported and cared, and did her very best to promote Redcar and this borough with positivity, energy. And we miss her very much. And I just want to give my heartfelt sympathy to John, her soulmate, that just recently had married, and to her Zetland FM family, and to all that were blessed to have known her and been in her company. And I just would like to put that on record, and give the opportunity maybe for other people on this council to just maybe put a few words together quickly on that matter. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We want to hear you.
I'm doing my best. Right, I think I'm unmuted now. Thank you, councillor Quartermaine. That's councillor Nightingale getting me all flustered. Thank you, councillor Quartermaine, for those lovely remarks. I'm sure that all members would echo those thoughts. If anybody would like to speak briefly now? I think everybody's echoing your thoughts in the message. Oh, hang on a second. Well, councillor Corley has indicated she wishes to speak, so I'll bring her in first.
I tried to put it on, but it wouldn't come up.
Right. Councillor Hunt, would you mind waiting a moment while I bring councillor Corley in, because I've already said I'll bring her in?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Corley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you councillor Hunt for stepping aside for me. I'd just like to echo what councillor Quartermaine, as part of the Inspirational Women Awards, Julie was there from the very first meeting we had as the inspirational women. And she was very much still part of the inspirational women as well. I always say, we're not a group who get together and put an event on. We are a group of friends that like to get together. We didn't just chat about our group and the inspirational women. We did all sorts regarding that. So she was a great ambassador, and the reason why she was as surprised when she won the volunteers award, but she also was a winner in many of our eyes. So as part of the inspirational women's group, I'd like, we echo everything that councillor Quartermaine said. The award ceremony is going to be very different without Julie up there on that stage, presenting it for us. She did a tremendous job for the five award ceremonies that we had. We are back together and planning for next year's award ceremony, which we will make sure is just as good as it will in the name of Julie. So I would just like to echo, it's not just somebody we lost, it was a friend of mine and many of my colleagues that are sat opposite and on the same side as mine. So she wasn't just a colleague, she was a friend. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Corley. And councillor Hunt, thank you for waiting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to thank councillor Quartermaine for bringing this up and giving her a chance, because Julie, when I was mayor of Loftus, did a lot of things to help me, and especially when I was mayor of Redcar in Cleveland, they really supported me with a lot of things. And I'll always remember the Carol concert that they'd recorded when I was mayor of Redcar in Cleveland. But I would just like to say also, I worked with Julie when I did my radio show on Radio Zetland. And when you work with someone, and you get used to them, and she was such a lovely person, I would just like to say, you know, from the heart, God bless her and rest in peace, because she was a lovely, lovely lady. So thank you, councillor Quartermaine.
So thank you, councillor Quartermaine, for bringing this to the attention, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for letting me speak.
Thank you, councillor Hunt. Okay. So thank you very much for your remarks. Well, we will close the meeting now, and I will wish you a Merry Christmas, a Happy Christmas and a much better 2021. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Same to everyone else.
Merry Christmas.